I guess we'll open the meeting up. It is now noon. The meeting is being video recorded and audio recorded. We have quite a few things to discuss. So, we just want to go down the line and we'll go with the stuff that we have on the agenda, then go to the stuff that's not on the agenda. So, first thing, new items of discussion are an intern. And I'm thinking Ben, that's your baby, right?
Kind of. So, this is something that you and I have been talking about occasionally in work sessions for over a year now. But this year, we got a young lady who was really interested in doing an internship program with us, and much to my surprise, her skill set fits in absolutely perfectly with some of the projects that we need to get done. So, the idea was kind of have a commissioner's intern, if you would, that would primarily work under probably Hugh Jeff, maybe, but to do primarily social media and digital marketing stuff for the county. And so, the scope of work for such an intern, at least this first intern, would be updating the website, running a campaign for the Public Safety Office in regards to their self-registration portal. Of course, updating our social media pages, actually all of them, including Public Safety, the county's. Helping to plan a public safety day, kind of fair, if you would. Potentially work on some promotional videos and graphic design projects under the commissioner's office, and help you with the day-to-day of the making the videos for the public meetings and uploading them to the website, and stuff like that. Potentially getting us on other social media platforms like LinkedIn, maybe Snapchat or something. Not Snapchat, it's another thing all the kids play on, Instagram.
There you go. Well, it's whatever the kids are using now, right? So, this is the resume from Julie Jamison. That's the one we're talking about, right?
Yeah, I didn't know if we wanted a name up specifically, but yes. But this is-
Well, I mean, it's not like we're saying-
... internship description, if you would, that I had before she came to the table. But she, through the WCCBI, reached out to us, and I believe she's either, she's a rising junior at Duquesne studying marketing and communications, if I remember correctly. So, I interviewed her a few weeks ago, thought that she'd be absolutely perfect. So, one thing that I'd like to discuss would be offering her some sort of a stipend, probably partly out of the public safety budget and partly out of the commissioner's budget. But I also wanted to make sure that we open up the conversation to others. You know, this one kind of fell on our laps, but you know, there are certainly other internship opportunities that we either have or could make, depending on whether people were interested in applying.
Yeah, I mean, this seems like a good pilot to work. I mean, yeah, and I mean, this is something that we've been talking about in other areas, but this is, this is one where literally, because I have a vague recollection of this is that literally this resume was brought up at the WCCBI as an opportunity for an intern, or someone who was interested in internships, and then you followed up to get it to where it is now. And basically, we have to figure out if we're going to have a stipend or not. And I think that the conversation too was related, did this have to relate to the union or did it have to relate to, and is this something that we should have a conversation about in salary board during executive session?
Well, that was, this conversation is kind of to kick off and figure out what we need to do, really. I know of other interns within the county system the department heads just kind of take on, but I don't believe that they get paid.
Well, some of them do because of grants. I'm pretty sure probation has paid interns.
Oh, okay.
They don't come through salary board?
They don't come through salary board.
I know that some of the interns get credit for their internships, so it's kind of a different scenario.
So, basically, the goal at this point is to come up with what kind of structure, because I think it won't be hard to come up with. We have a good list of projects for this person to do, whether it be create content for the website, help with communications online, you know, produce media-
There's more than enough projects.
Yeah, more than enough projects.
Honestly, if we got another application, someone else that was pursuing an internship at the county with a similar resume, I'm sure we could fill up their time as well. So, I guess, yes, the question here is, we've got this moment of opportunity, what kind of policy do we want to structure around it so that it's fair going forward?
Yeah.
And Pam, did you have a chance to talk to our council about-
I emailed him and I have not heard back.
Okay.
So, do you, do you want me to work with Pam and Mark and come up with a proposal that seems reasonable for the duties? And then we can discuss that at salary board?
I think the, I mean, the scope of work is actually pretty clear, and I've already written that up.
Okay.
So, I'm not very worried about that. What I am concerned about is, should we pay this person minimum wage? You know, not even specifically this person, but is this like a job that should be paid minimum wage that we need to put out for, to accept applications? Or I'm pretty sure that, I mean, at least on the private side, I know how internships work, but in government, I just don't know-
What?
-the specifics of whether you have to put this stuff out, whether you have to pay them minimum wage, or if stipends work. If so, then I would propose paying something that, I don't know, for 12 weeks' work in the ballpark of $2,000 probably, and that'd be full-time. But again, it's a stipend, and that would be under minimum wage.
Well, I think, I think that's kind of the question, right, is that we were asking what the legal framework is, because under certain circumstances, we have to post the job and advertise it.
Exactly.
And that's the kind of the question is, is what, and I get, and that's what I mean by a proposal, is if you want me to, while you're off this week, I can work with Pam and Mark and try to get an answer to that, so that we can then-
That'd be great.
-make a determination at the next work session as to what we're going to do, one way or the other, moving forward.
And then the other question that we should probably talk about now is, regardless of what their answer is, do we want to open this up and try to get additional interns? I know we had talked to some department heads, and some were excited about the idea, and others were not very excited about the idea, and some already do their own program. So, I don't know if this is something that we kind of want to allow the department heads to pursue if they want, like, we'll craft a policy, it's kind of overarching, but-
Yeah, so where we're at right now-
Do you want to pursue, go out and pursue departments to, you know, pursue interns, or do we want to help facilitate that? Or what method do you think we should use?
Well, I've met with all but Pam, oddly, of the people that were interested in internships or utilizing interns. And basically, I have to sit down and just work out the job descriptions and how they're going to be promoted. And then the idea was going to be, once everybody was comfortable with that, we would go out and solicit, or once we got done with that, the commissioners would have a conversation of like, okay, how are we going to compensate people, you know, and what the method for that's going to be? And then, and then we'd go out and solicit people for internships. Because the other thing that's kind of been added to this is something that I was going to share at the meeting, which was a meeting that I had with Jim Evers from the Career Center, and they have a setup for co-ops up there. And I wanted to get as much, as many particulars from them too, on, you know, what level of work they're willing to do, and, you know, what rate and where, and, you know, because they have a pretty nice setup where, you know, they know which students are their, you know, the really real go-getters, who would be a really good opportunity for them and a good opportunity for us. And so, we, you know, we'd be able to coordinate with them to get, I think, really good prospects, you know, to help us as well. But that said, anyway, my point is, is that there are a lot of different options here, so it's just a matter of getting the job descriptions written so that we can promote them, and then-
But probably on the department head rate, like, if there's a department that wants to have an intern, they should be providing some sort of a scope of work for the summer.
Well, they have. I just, it was just basically the conversations that we had, I took notes, and then I just have to type those notes out, like, so that then we can just, because the way I looked at it was just putting it in a format that can, that I can just, you know, publish it and it be promotable.
Right.
And so, that kind of just comes down to like, okay, like, are we going to have paid internships, are they not going to be paid? What's the difference in our ability to recruit people? And then ironing that out.
Right. All right, so-
There's no reason, do you just want to set a deadline for that? Just so we can say we can move on it? What's that?
How about the next work session, you will have talked to Mark and Pam and figured out kind of the logistics of how we go about, for lack of a better word, hiring an intern.
Okay.
And then, I think I'll put in some thought into what kind of a program we can do, so if there's going to be more than one, I would like, and I believe at least the sheriff's office has one lined up, so, you know, if we have two, three, four, five interns in the system, I would like to do some more of an intentional training of sorts, so maybe once a week, you know, I could sit down with them for a couple hours and talk about professionalism in the workplace, project management, that sort of thing.
I'm sure they're dying to hear from you, Ben.
I know.
Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
Professor Cafman.
Yeah, Professor Cafman, yeah. Anyway, yeah, that sounds good. So, yeah, because that was my whole reason for kind of being involved in it anyway, was to make sure that if we were going to do it in a lot of different places, that it was going to be coordinated, and that we were making sure that both sides were getting as much out of it as possible. So, all right, so next work session, we'll have a more detailed discussion on internships. Okay, so, let's see, that's one item. So, why don't we just go through the items that we have that Pam offered? So, the next is the agreement for the School Resource Officer Program. That was presented, has been presented several different times in kind of varied forms. This one, basically, the school district is agreeing to pay the county $36 per hour for each hour the deputy serves as a school resource officer, and a $750 monthly fee for the use of a fully marked and equipped county vehicle.
So, I've been, wait a minute. So, I was scheduled to talk with Amy Stewart about this last week, and I don't know, lines got crossed or whatever, but we weren't able to get on the phone at the same time. So, Pam, did somebody, did the sheriff or Amy Stewart contact you? Because I had not heard that they were in agreement with the 36.
No, I used the figure in one of your emails that you were going, there was something that had the $36 an hour in there.
Oh, that was, yeah, that was my proposal, yes.
So, basically, we're still waiting for confirmation from the school district and from the sheriff?
We're really waiting for confirmation from the school district that that's an acceptable rate.
Okay.
You know what, why don't I just send her an email, since we weren't able to talk on the phone?
Okay.
I'll send it right now, so it's not in the paper tomorrow, before she sees it.
Well, this is, we didn't have a meeting, that's what happened. All right. Did, just for clarity, the solicitor is 100% comfortable with the language in the contract? Like, as far as making sure that we're indemnified?
As much as we can be, yes.
Okay.
I mean, there's still risk on the county, mainly, you know, if our officer does something wrong, and or gets sued, we are susceptible, supposed to have to be, what, I guess?
Yeah, that's something we should do, just, I just wanted to make sure that the solicitor was 100% on it, that's all.
Yeah, he didn't see anything wrong with the contract, just to point out that there is still liability that the county has.
Yeah.
We knew that. I think the good still outweighs the risk.
Yeah, I put a call in to, I may follow up with him, just because I want to double-check with him.
Okay.
So, let's see, next thing is a proclamation, the year of the Y in Warren County, 150th anniversary. Invite the residents of Warren County participating in the Y Expo on April 19th, celebrate their 150th anniversary. That all look good to me. Do you have any, you got anything to add on the proclamation, Ben?
No.
Okay. Let's see, we have the notice to award the Mill Street Reconstruction to Russell Standard.
That's a CDBG project.
Yeah, through Lori. We opened the bids on that last week. So, Russell Standard apparently was the winning bidder. That all look good to me. And then the Area Pleasant Street Reconstruction in Clarendon, which is also a CDBG project. That's going to be on the agenda for Wednesday. I only think, let's see, okay, yeah, it was just the scan was bad, I thought the date was incorrect, it is correct. The next is the agreement with MCM Consulting Group.
Is this just a renewal, Tom?
No, no. The agreement has to do a commodity flow study, something that they kind of want statewide, or the state wants done every few years. Last time we did a full commodity flow study was 2003. We did an update in 2012, just rechecked a few things. But what this does is, is the MCM will go through and they'll do a, you know, for all of the railroad, for the pipelines, for any type of transportation of hazardous materials in or out of Warren County. When you talk about a commodity, it's a hazardous materials commodity. This would be a contract with MCM that's through a grant, our HMDP Hazardous Materials Security Protection grant, that, it's funny that, you know, we're doing this contract with the MCM to do it, but the hazardous materials grant is, just got out Friday. It's through the federal government, the hazardous, the grant, and so it technically started in September, but we haven't even, I haven't even put it in front of the commissioners to be approved yet. We've approved, we requested the money, you know, the commissioners approved requesting the money, and this was one of the requests, was for $8,000 to do this commodity flow study. It's using hazardous materials funds. There's a $2,000, you know, match that is an allowable expense to the hazardous materials fund, and LAPC is, you know, on board with spending the $2,000 to do that. So, this would be no, you know, general fund taxes. The, so, I'm just requesting that the commissioners would sign off on the MCM contract for, to do our commodity flow study. We're kind of, because it's one of those typical things that the feds said, okay, well, you have the money to do this, now you need to sign your agreement. Oh, by the way, this agreement started in September, and you have to have it all expended and everything all done before September. You know, it's now already in the middle of April. We take our time giving you the money, but you've got to deal with it, or fast. And so, that's why I'm asking, to get this agreement signed with MCM to be able to do this. Like I said, no general fund money. It's been since 2003 is the last time we did a full commodity flow study. They still set up like in, you know, they'll talk to the railroad, they'll talk to United, they'll talk to any of our pipelines, you know, and it just tells us what is going in and out of Warren County for hazardous materials. So, like I said, it's usually, they did one statewide a few years ago, and the vendor went belly up and took all the information, and they never got anything out of it, but so, they were going back to just funding counties to do their own.
And do you have any questions?
No, I have, I have somebody with it.
Okay. That all sounds good. The next is a lease agreement, or a series of lease agreements, or is it one lease agreement? This is for one of the tower sites, right?
Yeah, we've only gotten one officially back from the solicitor. It's a lease agreement with the parties that now are the present owners of the land where what we call Stilson Tower Site is. I just wanted to, you know, to go through the work session. I plan on giving this to Mr. Brewster tonight at Young's Borough Council Meeting.
A fact.
He belongs. So, it's just been waiting, and so, it needs to be approved by them and the board officially. It's really, it's-
A formality.
It's a formality, because the previous contract was written for a 99-year lease, but it wasn't written as heirs and successors. So, it's more or less just adding the new landowners, which are descendants of the previous landowner, and they're, you know, verbally are fine with this, so it's just getting it officially signed by both the new owners and the commissioners. The terms are the same as what it was. If they would have had the heirs and successors listed on the last agreement, we'd be good for still another 20 years, but-
Yeah, and that's-
And they're still waiting on a couple other agreements from-
Yeah, Mr. Brewster's a township supervisor, or city council, sorry, Borough Council, sorry. And I run into him all the time when he asks me about the towers, like, is he inherited it essentially? Let's see, hey, Ben, do you have any questions about that?
Um, no, except I was going to tell you that one of the other owners of another tower site said that he would sign up to the same deal in terms of letting us have the property for whatever dollar, whatever we end up paying for it for 99 years.
Very good.
So, making progress.
The one other tower is kind of a, there's never been an official agreement on it, and it's kind of an odd situation, because it was a handshake back in the 80s, and it's technically on two different pieces of property, two different owners. So, we need to make two agreements, so.
There you go. So, let's see, the next piece is a resolution, 3082, Resolution by Municipalities Certifying Provision of Local Match for State-Operating Financial Assistance. Provide the County Transit Authority local funds in the amount of $31,736. That, the only thing I would say is, is there's an error in the first paragraph that just says $31,736.00.00. Present to, certified, and this has been budgeted for this year, this was a part of the 2017 budget. And it's just basically making a resolution that will pay the Transit Authority that money.
This will actually have to go into the 18 budget.
Oh, this is for 18, 2017, you think, sorry, that's a full year, so why is I keep forgetting about that? Sorry. Yeah, so, which is an increase, we're actually taking over the area agency on agings portion that previously they were paying. I can't remember what the amount is off the top of my head, Pam. But we were only paying like five grand, were we?
Yes.
We were paying like 5,000. The area agency on aging is taking over the rest, with the changes in the state funding streams, with the move to privatization for area agencies on aging, the move to managed care. The AAA has taken a lot of different hits from different angles, and their ability to provide matching funds is completely disappeared. Also, technically speaking, part of this is a conversation that we've had with Penn Dot, that really the area agency on aging shouldn't be the one responsible for the local match, so it's a natural function of the county. So, we've increased our match to the TAWK. They provide services, their shared ride service is very important to the county, you know, taking seniors to a lot of different places, all of our senior homes and a lot of different organizations utilize some services, so it's very important that we maintain that. And the $31,736 is just the matching fund, what we get back from Penn Dot for, though that is huge in comparison to that money that we before, so. And do you have anything to add with that?
No, you've been kind of more involved with that than me. But trust your judgment, and I'll, I got it.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we basically could do it, or else all our services get cut. Let's see, is there any questions at this point? No? Okay. Resolution by, the next one's a resolution by municipalities, or, oh, wait, 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 it's the same thing, just a different word. Local match, there's John's Hand Scramble Note. I always enjoy that one, somebody having to request and put my hand scramble note. Resolution number 3030, let's see, meeting in the regular session. I'm not familiar with this one.
383?
Follow along.
That is on the DCED Early Intervention Program.
Okay, why does it say Transit Authority, Warren City, County in the amount of $70?
Those are just the backups.
Oh, okay.
Documentation as to where they're getting their other funds.
Ah, okay, all right. So, this is for, did you say DCED?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know, I'll have to look at that in order of detail after the meeting.
Ben can probably explain what this resolution is about. This is the one on the Early Intervention Program, Ben.
Right. All right, so to summarize, a couple weeks ago, I met with DCC when I was at Pittsburgh. They informed me about this early intervention program, which they point out is not the greatest name, because it really was named when the, the program's primarily used to help municipalities that were going into bankruptcy. But now, this is so far upstream, they're really, it's really just encouraging projections and smart financial planning. So, anyway, Ed Bockham came for a work session last week and gave a description of it, and pointed out that they still have funds available in fiscal year 2016, 2017, but if we don't get an application in before mid-April or so, they won't be able to consider it until next fiscal year, so we wouldn't know until July. So, we are trying to get- Uh, so we are trying to get, do everything we can to get our application for an early intervention plan again by mid-April, which is obviously very much upon us. Basically, uh, we weren't sure if we were going to make, make it, I guess, by Wednesday's public meeting, but, um, I had a guess I'd like to propose that we be ready to pass this resolution, um, which is a non-binding, um, I don't know what to call it. I mean, I guess a non-binding resolution that we will kick in, um, uh, that we will pay for a consultant to come help us do trend analysis, five-year budget planning, or excuse me, multi-year budget planning, five-year forecasting, um, analysis of our fiscal health currently and the past couple of years, um, and potentially any other problems that we would like to have planned. And then the DCED will reimburse us anything that we spend on this, um, up to somewhere between 75%, maybe up to 90% of the cost of the cost to hire such a consultant. Um, again, timing is everything with this and, um, we're still verifying a lot of the details. So, uh, Dan Blotz has generously offered to step up and communicate with DCED. We met seriously, it was like 4:30 on Friday, uh, so I don't think he's probably had a chance to look into the questions that we had, but, um-
No, he put a call into Ed Boskow and he is still waiting.
Yeah, so, uh, we may not, I mean, certainly by Wednesday, we'll need to have those questions answered before voting on it, but, uh, you know, for the Monday work session, I guess, this is just kind of backstory as to why I'm asking that it be on the agenda for Wednesday, uh, in case we can get everything lined up and move forward with it.
Yeah, um, I would just add a couple of things. One is that, um, basically the, the issue with this is, is the timing of it. Generally in other scenarios, people would have more of the time to get the RFP out for their consultant so they have an idea of the cost and what they're asking for from the DCED. Basically, the, well, the information that we've got from DCED is just give us the application and we will accommodate your, um, pro, we can accommodate whatever your program ends up being. So, um, because to some degree, they talked about this being an issue in almost every case where they're not really, like, the, the, the application comes before the actual allocation of funds. And so our goal is to get as much of a, a contribution from DCED as possible to pay for it. And, and the only thing that I would add to what Ben said, which was a very good summary is that they also do process analysis, um, just with the various programs within the county to determine if you're, uh, how they're functioning to make recommendations to improve them. Isn't that correct, Ben?
I'm sorry, it was on me to guess.
No, I believe that was part of it, Jeff, is they'll look at other programs.
I just wanted to say that it isn't just financial, it's also process management and engineering.
Yeah, the financials are the requirement. They aren't even going to mess around with us unless we're willing to do, uh, the trend analysis, you know, multi-year budgeting, et cetera, et cetera. But you're right that, uh, we are allowed to expand the scope of work much beyond purely financial and to processes, or process improvement, um, software analysis and recommendations.
Well, and they were, they're also-
Policies, et cetera.
I mean, they were also talking about like the county infrastructure and other things as well.
Yep.
I mean, so it's, it's very, um, a very comprehensive analysis.
Yeah, um, economic planning, all kinds of things. I know what Beaver County is using it for, uh, has to do with, um, how to prepare for the cracker plant that's coming in.
Yeah.
But I know plenty of other, particularly smaller municipalities that are using it more for, um, you know, yes, visible infrastructure, uh, bridges, buildings, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
I haven't fully reviewed the city's application, but the city applied as well. Um, and I, I think it's also important to note that, uh, Forest County is considering going in with us on that as well, which would be advantageous given that we share so many services.
Yeah, Jefferson County got involved in this program about 12 years ago when they were having major financial issues and, um, uh, they, they still utilize the program today, the consultant that they got then, and they're in very solid financial standing, incredibly so, um, and they're the same size.
Yeah, almost double the Jefferson.
What's, yeah, they, they, their setup is very good, very, very good. And so, um, it would be, it would be really nice to get to a place like that.
Yeah.
All right, uh, I don't have anything that was in, else that was in the official packet. Ben, do you have anything that you want to go over?
Um, no, I have a lot of little things that I'm working on, but, um, I, I don't think that it's really at the point where I need to bring it before the board yet.
Okay. So the, the one thing that I wanted to discuss because I want to get this, um, rolling is the engineering, um, setup for, uh, for the county. I've sat through and reviewed all three and, and I, I totally whiffed on asking Matt to be here. I should have had him here as well to go over his recommendations. After reviewing all of the, um, the, all of the proposals, we had three what I thought were very solid proposals for engineer. All of them have elements inside and out, well, all of it, Stifler-McGraw and Dyson-Holme Engineering, uh, are both outside of the county. Um, E&amp;M Engineers are in Bradford, but their packet had elements from three different companies in it. I reviewed the, the costs of each organization and, um, they were all pretty close. My recommendation is to go with E&amp;M Engineers and surveyors. They are also working with RW Larson as well as, uh, Karpinski Engineering. RW or Larson is a, is an architecture firm in Warren County, um, located up in North Warren. And then Karpinski is an engineering firm that focuses specifically on energy efficiency. Um, so they have the, what I thought was the most complete package and they've worked with, they worked on the Warren Municipal Building and a number of, of very nice, um, projects within Warren County that they thought were comparable to what we're looking to do with the courthouse and, and the grounds in the area. And, um, and their, their cost is, is, is very competitive with Dyson-Holme. And then, uh, what else was there? I called the references there. I got two contacts and they've worked with municipalities in the area for over, uh, one municipality over 15 years, the other over 30 years. And, um, both of them had nothing but really nice things to say about them. So that's going to be my recommendation. Are you comfortable with going along with me on it based on if Matt's okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I have not been very involved in this process. But again, I'm happy to take your recommendation to delve into the whole thing.
Yeah. I mean, they, all three of them were great. I mean, I, I, looking through them, I was worried that we would, you know, with three bids that, that maybe we would be really, um, that, that it would be difficult to find a good firm. Actually, it was the opposite. All three were really fantastic and, um, you know, my basis audit was just the completeness of the presentation for E&amp;M, um, the fact that they're more local or they have more local elements in their organization. And then the, the types of projects that they've worked on are very specifically aligned with the stuff that we're planning on doing over the next couple of years.
All right, the rates are comparable?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're all very similar. The engineering rates, E&amp;M had more rates in theirs because they included architecture. The energy efficiency engineer, which, um, engineering firm is, is a little bit more expensive than the regular engineering, but, um, we may want to, um, talk to them in relation to the meeting we had, um, a few weeks ago with, um, Reinhold or Rein, I can't remember, I can never remember the agency's name about, um-
Garland and Reynolds.
Or Garland and Reynolds, Reinhold, Dr. Reinhold. Reynolds, uh, the Reynolds Organization and maybe some others about hoping for you to, um, maybe do an energy efficiency grant of some kind or find funding that would, that would help support like an energy efficient system. But we could, that's something we, way down the road that we can talk about later. So if you're okay with that, then what I'll do is, um, engage E&amp;M and talk to them about getting a, an agreement so that we can pass that hopefully as soon as possible so we can get them working with Matt to, uh, get going on the boiler project and then on the, on the air conditioning for the jail.
Yeah, this will be a year-long commitment? No, it's not a commitment, I realize, but-
Yeah, well, I mean, the, the way, the way most of the, it seems most of the municipalities set it up is they do it in an annual agreement, but it just renews and basically they just, they can leave them at any time. I, I, it would, they probably have a, well, I have a couple sample contracts that are up with me here right now that, uh-
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay. See what else? This is not to be this. I, I was here last thing, so I want to find, I'm going to play with it together. I, I realize, Ben, you can't see this, several of my 17 sheets that I gave off on a sauna because we don't listen to them. Let's see. Oh, hey, Ben, are you, is your plan to be back for, um, are you going to be back by Tuesday the 17th?
Yes.
Or Tuesday the 18th, sorry?
Yeah, I'm, uh-
For the governing board?
Yeah, I'm taking, um, tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday off, Friday's a holiday, then I'm taking Monday off. Tuesday I'll be back.
Okay. Cause I'm, I'm going to go to, uh, I want to go to the behavioral health task force at the CCAP and so I'm going to skip the governing board.
Yep, I'll be there for that.
Let me just make sure that there's nothing else that I wanted to talk to you about. So I, I guess we'll just go over real quick. Friday I met with Jim Evers at the Career Center and I'm going to follow up with him and, and did a very quick tour of the facility and, um, the programs that they have set up there. I think that there's a lot of potential for us to coordinate with them. I'm, I'm going to send them an email today to get contact information from some of the specific directors within the organization. They have a marketing program up there and, um, I want to see if we can give them some projects related to like content for the website, um, you know, um, social media projects. And also I was wondering if you'd be interested in, in going up there and maybe teaching, like, like having a day where we speak to the class. Uh, they bring a lot of people in to do, you know, to talk to the kids and stuff like that.
Yeah, I actually already do that every couple months.
Well, there you go.
And for a couple of years.
Well, then I should be talking to you then. Okay, Ben.
Make sure you get reservations to go to the culinary areas.
Yeah. All right, he does this. Okay. So the other thing that I wanted to, to talk to you about was, uh, I, I went up to talk to them about the, I, I have to have a follow-up meeting because the, uh, Rick Waterman, the, the guy in charge of the building, you know, construction operation class, uh, wasn't available that day, so I'm going to follow up with him. But I, they're working on a Habitat for Humanity project and, um, I don't think they're going to be able to get to the benches, um, this year. So two things. One is I'd like to line up some projects that we can collaborate with them on. And what I wanted to, to do was have a conversation about the grounds, uh, both at the county, like at the courthouse, and then also the trail itself, like the bike hike trail. One to do, to talk about what we can do to improve the space, um, around the courthouse to be utilized by employees and, and, and the community. But what kind of types of projects we could do to maybe, um, develop the, the park around the courthouse, um, especially with single point of entry and there not being any foot traffic to the front of the building. I think it would be worthwhile to try to see what we can do to maybe utilize that space a little bit better.
Yeah.
So I, I thought it would be a perfect long-term project for them where there's no timeframe. You know, like we can say, okay, this summer you're going to work on, you know, like whether it's a pavilion, some small pavilion, a gazebo or a series of benches or, you know, whatever, it can be whatever, and get input from the, from the employees and everybody.
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, what was the second thing? Oh, yeah, and then on the, to go back to the trail, um, basically I wanted to talk about doing two things. One is the, is using Act 13 Greenway funds to get benches ordered for the trail. And then secondarily, work with the, um, whether it's the Boy Scouts or, but most likely it will be the, um, uh, building construction group at the, the Career Center, is line up a project to maybe build a, um, like more of a community space at the head of that trail, um, whether it be some kind of covered installation where people can read, um, you know, hang out, um, you know, spend time next to the river or, uh, you know, something, it doesn't have to be big, but something small, but like a, a space there where, where people can rest or, or relax, spend time, uh, next to the trail. And, cause, cause we're constantly looking for, for projects with Act 13 funds and, and that's something that I don't think we would have to throw too much at to, uh, to develop that space a little bit more. And Dan, I talked to Dan about it and he seemed to think that that was very doable.
Yeah, it, it does sound like a very viable use of the funds and I think we have well over a hundred thousand.
That's why I was- Yeah, absolutely. And, and since there have been so many requests for benches along that stretch, I think, I, I'd rather not wait and get them in there. So Dan's going to go talk to the, uh, go, there's, there's a couple, couple organizations that he's involved in and he's going to go talk to. He's going to get an answer from me on that in the next couple of days. And then based on that, if they, if he, if there's no other like, um, volunteer organization that would be interested in working on it, um, then we're going to go out and solicit, um, bids or research companies in order to get benches for the, for the, get six to eight benches for the, the trail.
Yeah, well, I mean, I kind of hope that it doesn't come to that because there's so many Boy Scouts and, um, well, yeah, mostly Boy Scouts that I've heard of that are looking for that kind of a project.
Well, yeah, Dan's heavily involved and he says that he keeps lobbying them to do something like that, but hasn't gotten anywhere, so, uh-
Yeah, I forgot that.
So that's why I, I'm, that's why I'm kind of at the point now where, um, you know, planning and zoning and everybody's getting a lot of requests for, for benches and, and with the removal of the benches with the advertisements on them, um, you know, it's, it's just become, I just want to kind of put it, put that to sleep, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Understood.
Yeah, so, um, this is something, this is something perhaps, um, I was more controversial than I would have anticipated or, um, yeah, so the benches were, there's a company, I'm pretty sure they're from Jamestown, but maybe not. I can't remember where they are. I don't have the, I don't have the agreement or anything. They put benches up along that stretch. There was no agreement signed by the commissioners. They were selling advertising on those benches. And, um, the, the issue that I had with it was, um, there's technically advertising on public space and once you start doing that, you get into the realm of only businesses that can pay. once you start doing that, you get into the realm of only businesses that can pay and promote on public space, it's really not fair. And then also it's a nice space, casual space for people to enjoy, I don't think that having advertisements along it is really the ideal thing, especially when we, you know, have funds to develop the, those trails, you know, and it's our responsibility, I'd like to see some really nice, you know, and, and the thing is, is at the time we, I was aware, Dan, I talked with Dan about the, the need for benches along this, that trail, but I think this has kind of brought it to a, to a, to a head, I guess, and it's more, it's something that needs to happen sooner than later. And I'd rather just get it done than sit on it for any length of time. And we can, and that's why I was saying too, is I really want to get Career Center involved in it because I think that those spaces are so great for development, you know, to do different things with and the work that they do is really great, like they built benches for the Rimrock Trail and everybody loved them and thought that they did a really fantastic job, so that's why I was talking to Dan about, okay, well, we'll, you know, they can be using their pre-engineering program to design a structure, the very simple structure to be put like at the head of the trail or somewhere along it, depending upon what our rates are with the right of way, and then they can design and develop it and then install the thing and we'll just supervise it, you know, and that'll be, be a real good project for them, we'll, you know, improve that space. So I'm trying to think a lot of other things. Yeah, and with the marketing program, I wanted to kind of coordinate with like the department heads on materials that they'd like to get printed, like everybody has different brochures, different stuff that they have that they produce themselves or their whatever and, and it would be nice to maybe coordinate with the school and get some stuff developed through them and give them the content, they put the stuff together, we kind of supervise it and get, you know, like I'd like to see at some point like a brochure rack or some different things where our, our materials are coordinated throughout the county, the handouts and everything. So I'm just trying to think all the different ways we can get them working with us so that it's another set of hands that we can handle. And so, yeah, that's you. Anyway, that's enough, I got plenty of other stuff.
I've got a couple quick annoying things. First of all, next, the twenty-fifth, Tuesday the twenty-fifth, is the Knox Law Municipality event open hearing. It went last year and it was really valuable, so I guess I'd encourage you Jeff, as well as any other concept supervisors and such, if they'll be interested in going to maybe carpool up together, again, it's really good event and includes dinner.
Yeah, I've already registered for it, I talked with Dan this morning about it because he had a couple of municipal officials that were interested in it, so he's going to provide information to them. I told him to tell them that we would be more than happy to all ride up together.
Yeah, we'll just get the county van.
Yeah.
The next day, by the way, the twenty-sixth, is the next time that I'm teaching at the Career Center, so if you wanted to either tag along or teach that one, I also have the twenty-seventh, both the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh, so if you wanted to teach one and I wanted to teach one, that'd be fine with me.
Okay, maybe we can work on that. I see eight to ten.
And then I wanted to mention to you that I'm going down to Lewisburg on the ninth to take my last class to finish the C cap academy, the Excellence in Government.
Yeah.
So again, if you were, I'm actually almost done, so I should be, I think I need to go to one more conference and then take this class and I'm actually ready to graduate.
Which, which class are you taking?
I don't recall the name of it.
Because I'm, I'm, are you going down to C cap, the office?
Down, it's in Lewisburg, this one is.
Oh, okay, sorry, I'm going to the C cap office that day, they have a class there, Building a Culture of Success. I like success, so I figured it'd be a good thing to go to.
Okay, well, actually that may be it.
That's in the C cap office in Harrisburg, I, I know what you're talking about because I just went through the C cap calendar the other day, so I know what you're talking about.
All right, well, either way.
That's great.
It makes sense to carpool or whatever. But the other thing is, I think that success one, I think I took that last year and they offer it fairly regularly, whereas this one, I think it's the last offering that you get of it before the twenty eighteen graduation, so if you were going to pursue that accreditation or whatever, you may want to switch over and come to this one.
I may, but my only thing is, is that I haven't kept track of the credits and everything, I just end up going to, going to the class.
It doesn't matter, they keep track of it anyway, so.
Well, I know, I know they do, I'm just saying that, that I, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't kept up on it, so, I mean, if the class is good, then I'll switch.
If that's handy where you ask.
If it's a good class, I'll switch. I'll write down, because you're not crying by yourself. You can tell me about what management books you're reading.
Yeah, thank you, that is my concern. All right, I think that was it.
Good. Do you have anything else?
I don't think so.
Anybody else have anything?
A fund meeting in Harrisburg, you know, one of the things that did come up, doesn't just affect veterans, affects everybody in the state, effective January first, Pennsylvania driver's license will not be able to be used for any federal access, so if you have to go into a federal building, unless they get the driver's license changed, you'll have to have like a passport or some other federally accepted identification to get into any federal building or anything that a federal ID is required for. Pennsylvania will not get another extension.
I may never change it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that the state's going to act on that, you know.
Which is going to cost a fortune.
And that's why.
Oh, yeah.
I think they said, didn't they estimate it like a quarter of a billion or something? Some ridiculous number.
Yeah.
I forget, all new driver's licenses.
All new driver's licenses for everybody.
They sent them to everybody, it's not her.
Yeah, wait, it's not.
Yeah, this is, this is the middle of April, so.
Yeah, so when did you say the date was?
January.
January of?
Eighteen.
Yeah. They'll figure it out. I mean, they're, they're so efficient, no time flat.
We don't even have a budget yet.
Well, we probably won't even have that by the year, who knows?
Oh, Jeff, I did want to mention two other things, calendar-wise, that I missed. One is Conservation District is having their annual meeting on the eighteenth. I'm pretty sure Cindy and I are going, I just want to make sure you saw the invite.
I just looked at, did you say the eighteenth of May?
April.
April?
I believe so.
Yeah, I should be able to.
The next day, the Small Business Development Council or Comp, whatever, the Small Business Development something, out of Erie is coming down to give a, like a free consultation, I guess, to any area of businesses that want help on developing business plans and marketing plans and that sort of thing. And so I wanted to, I think I sent you a calendar invite for it, but wanted to kind of highlight it and also ask if, pretty cool with putting it on the county Facebook page, maybe even the webpage so that we can help promote it a little bit?
Sure, sure, I'll take a look at it.
All right.
Sounds good.
All right, now I think I'm done.
Okay.
I was scared it was a really jam for the next few.
Yeah, well, it's just, yeah, well, and, and whatever space I have is going to get filled up real quick because I've got a bunch of meetings I've got scheduled, so.
Yeah.
I've just, Ben, it's Todd, I've got a couple of things I just wanted to let you guys know that's coming out. Obviously, we kind of hit on it, the hazardous materials, emergency preparedness grant that's just going to need to be signed by the three of you, you know, approved, you know, applying for it. Wanda had to do, we just got it on Friday and she was going to do some more work on it, but we can, we got time to do that at the next commissioner's meeting, it's the twenty-sixth, right? That's whatever, whatever, two weeks, yeah, twenty-sixth. That's for our commodity flow study, the Hazmat Conference, the Hazmat Awareness, the Hazmat Operations Class, that's what that grant will pay for. The other thing I've got coming out is in July, our contract for Motorola, our equipment at the nine-one-one center, the MC fifty-five hundred and the, the workstation's equipment at the nine-one-one center, that five-year contract is due. I got a ballpark price from them, I told them that you guys already beat me up and asked me to try to get better prices and I'm waiting to hear back from them. Their first ballpark price was eighty-four thousand dollars for a five-year contract.
How does that compare?
That's a five-year contract, so.
Yeah, how does it compare to the last contract?
And they thought about, they wanted, what Motorola is looking for is a five percent increase yearly and it's.
Yeah, and have we seen a five percent quality increase?
Uh, no. Fortunately, the equipment's running and we haven't needed it, but it's also, everything's ten years old and, you know, I'm hoping that we, you know, we get another five years out of it and then we start looking at, you know, an upgrade or something like that. We have already upgraded the PCs and stuff once in this timeframe, so this does include preventive maintenance, twenty-four-seven coverage, gold coverage, the whole nine yards, and it can't be hacked into and set off everybody's siren like they can in Texas.
Did you, did you hear the old, the siren that went off earlier? The twi- twice down here?
Yeah, it just kind of beeped and it just.
No, and.
Yeah, just a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were, Scott was over there and United was over there getting it serviced.
Oh, okay.
We're going to set it off on, our weather sirens on the twenty-fifth, that's the spring weather exercise for the state and we're dealing with the schools.
Okay.
Just making sure that Tom Ma from Ramco goes up and checks and make sure the electronics are all good, but it hadn't been physically serviced in a couple of years, as in, you know, because the thing rotates, you've got to grease it and check the air compressor and, you know, all that kind of stuff. United Refining was doing that, apparently they were the ones that did it in the past and they were, because Tom said there's, looks like some bolts loose, that wasn't his, so, nothing major, just, you know, that's probably why it went off just a little bit, just making sure it was going to, was physically going to work. Tom knew that it was electronically going to set off, but making sure it's going to physically work. The only other thing I have is, is we've been dealing pretty bad the last few weeks of dealing with a radio circuit that we have that goes from Youngsville to our Sheffield, for our Sheffield Tower. It's very, very convoluted, it's a, you know, technically a telephone circuit that is dedicated, so it's a radio circuit that goes from our nine-one-one center to the CO in Youngsville, to the CO in Warren, to the CO in Sheffield, and it turns from Verizon into Windstream and then it goes from the CO in Sheffield to the fire station and then from the fire station, it's microwaved up to the tower, the West PA.
When you said it was convoluted, I thought you were just going to skip the convoluted part.
The what?
When you said that this was convoluted, I was expecting you to just skip over it.
No.
I'm thoroughly confused.
Well, but it's, yeah, it's very confusing, but I, just before this meeting, I had a meeting with the partners at West PA, they're the actual owners of the Sheffield Tower, we have the equipment up there for, you know, our, you know, dispatch of the Sheffield area. We are looking at putting a dedicated fiber connection from that tower to the nine-one-one center in Youngsville. We have to deal a little bit and talk with Youngsville TV, we're either going to use a little bit of their dark fiber and/or overlap. West PA is in the process of doing a few other things, so they are very cognizant of the issue and are very willing to help us along with this. Their fiber actually runs a different direction than what our Zito fiber is going from here to Youngsville, from the courthouse to Youngsville, so I've been discussing with them of changing to them as our backup internet service instead of Verizon DSL in Youngsville.
Yeah, maybe smart.
Yes, because it comes in a different direction, it comes down off of Follett and Brown Hill and up through that area instead of going right down Route Six, so it's, it's a redundant, we, you know, right now, right now that was our only choice was Verizon because Youngsville TV has internet, but they use Zito fiber, so if the Zito fiber's down, Youngsville's internet's down, so it's, it's not a, we can't, that's not a redundancy. So West PA is, with this other project of putting that connectivity from Youngsville to Sheffield, them giving us, not giving, but providing internet service to us as our backup for our telephony project, right now we are paying Verizon DSL two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars a month. West PA will do it for a hundred dollars a month. Our radio connections from Youngsville to there is two-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars a month, they'll do that for two-hundred dollars, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month. So we're looking at a, you know, a hundred-and-fifty-dollar-a-month savings and our service getting like exponentially better. We have, you know, so many points of failure along that radio circuit now, between Verizon, Windstream, Ken McWerson and Tom Ma, they were all day Friday working on it. And I say all day Friday, it was from eight AM until three AM. We're talking, you know, it was not a pretty picture, a lot of finger pointing, you know, well, our part's working and when we hook it up to yours, it doesn't work and this, you know, it's the radio problem, it's the Youngsville problem, it's Windstream problem, so this connectivity is a wash for that fiber compared to what we're paying for the radio circuits and we're going to just exponentially help the people of the Sheffield area and then we have actually room for expansion too, so. And then the internet service, our backup internet service, you know, like I said, we're talking about a hundred-and-fifty dollars a month savings and we're going from what Verizon says is a three-meg connection that's not even anywhere near that, Verizon DSL is horrid in Youngsville and we will, they'll have a ten-meg connection, ten up, ten down, static IP directly just for us for a hundred dollars a month, so it's, it's a win-win situation for us, so that will be, they're going to get final pricing and contracts and then I'll be bringing that in front of you as soon as we can so we can get away from our problem child of half of it being Verizon, half of it being Windstream, it's, it's not pretty, so. Did you get all that? But that's more to come, obviously, and hopefully I'll have more by the next work session and I really hope to have everything in place by, you know, the next commissioner's meeting, the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
That's it, I'm done.
Anybody else? Anybody else? You were? You? Somebody? Okay. I think with that, we'll close the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
I'll see you later, Dan.
Thank you, Ben.
See you later, Ben.
Good luck.
Yes. I just want, I just want, I just want...